I'll call the meeting to order at seven oh three P M. Everyone can please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, into the roll call, Mr. Keg.
Here.
Ms. Line Decker.
Here.
Mr. Shaver.
Here.
Mr. Becker.
Here.
Mr. Wirt.
Here.
Ms. Bauer.
Here.
Ms. Drobnik.
Here.
Mayor Keg.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Borough Council held an executive session on Tuesday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty four at six thirty P M. To discuss the potential acquisition of real property. There are no agenda amendments coming out of executive session. But we will start this evening with some commendations. Or not? Okay, never mind.
Sorry, I was like.
I wasn't aware of that.
Silence and two people staring at each other.
Yeah, surprise to me, too.
Guy cut through that.
Yeah.
It was tense. Sorry. All right.
It was tense.
So at that point, we will open the floor to public comment. Jim, you don't even have to raise your hand.
Some of the people. Obligation. Jim Hunt is about two hundred fifty two. Process. Six hundred. Says. Us. What? Started the process. And of that. Hundred six, hundred six new accounts. I think we have. The volume of. It worked it up. It's all the cats. Uh, today. Now of six, uh, six hundred eighty five. Of the camps. The system. Or this started by two years ago is like sixty three or something. So. Would work. So. Those apart. Classic.
Break out the mic.
I think. I don't believe we've. Looking down some. Dean, Jack, anyone else? And here, if anyone else, if I could, definitely see that we did this new system sort.
Thank you.
I don't hear any difference.
They can hear it online, which is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The difference.
That we can meet after the meeting and get this new system. Up and running since it's been dormant for so many years. And Elba is the key person because she's the one who comes contact with the public, the general public. When they come in and are finding out about building permits and so forth, or changing a property to a rental property. And therefore. She can get the first line person to contact with those people. Uh, and process it from there. Uh, she has already, as of last week. Got seven appointments for inspections already. Uh, so she would have to backtrack that and ask the people, you know, do you have your business license? And if they sound sort of dumb founded, so to speak. She could set them straight and say, I'll take your information. And I will forward it to Jim Hunt and he will process it, send you the license, which is now fifty dollars. And whatever form that you're going to need to report your income from your rental or a business property. And get the whole system starting from there and work from that point forward. I also think maybe since it's a new year and you have a new collecting agency. Maybe something should be put on the borough website. So the general public would see. Hey, you know, what is this? You know, um, some, especially some people who got a mailing from Jim Hunt. And didn't realize. They were a little behind schedule. I think it helped to make the public more aware of what their obligation may be. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Any questions, I'll answer them. Try to.
We'll chat after the meeting. Anyone else from the public? Chaz, go ahead.
Um, just wanted to real quick, make everybody aware, we're gonna have an open house at our office next Thursday, the twenty fifth. It's gonna be from four to seven. Love to see everybody there. Um, all. I didn't get a chance to bring flyers today because of the snow. I didn't want them to get, you know, snowed on. But I'll, I'll drop them by one day this week. So I have a few for upfront, but it's gonna be four to seven, uh, next Thursday. Our office is eleven eleven Penn Ave. So just three blocks outside of the bar. So to see you there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Anyone online? See Karen shaking her head now. All right. I will close the floor to public comment and move forward to the approval of the minutes. Uh, in your packet, you have the December nineteenth regular meeting and the January second reord meeting. Uh, take a moment to, uh, refresh your memory. If there's anything in there that needs addressing, please do it now. Otherwise, looking for a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Wirt.
Second.
Second by Ms. Drobnik. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Onto ordinances and resolutions. First up is ordinance eleven eighty. This would be adopting an amendment. That relocates a space within the four hundred block of Chetnut Street and also adds a space within the three hundred block of Linden Lane. Do we have any questions on that? Seeing none, looking for approval.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Ward. Second. Second by Mr. Keg. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next up is ordinance eleven eighty one, which is for one-way streets and stop intersections. Uh, this will have, uh, be the advertisement, uh, of amendments to the list of one-way streets and stop intersections on Holland Square and Juniana Street. And it looks like it also changes some of the alleyways to their, uh, given names now. Does anyone have any questions on that ordinance? Is looking for approval of authorizing the advertisement.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Shaver.
Seconded.
Second by Ms. Line Decker. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. And carries. Next up is resolution twenty twenty four dash four, which is your extension of the local disaster emergency. Uh, looking to extend this through the February twentieth, twenty twenty four council meeting.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Dropman.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keg. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next up is resolution twenty twenty four dash five. Uh, this is consideration to appoint both the treasurer and assistant treasurer as recipients of confidential tax information. They'll allow them both to talk to Burkeheimer. Does anybody have any questions on that? Otherwise, looking for approval. Motion made by Ms. Line Decker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cagle. In favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Onto consultants reports, solicitors report. Dan, do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we'll move on to the engineers report. It's Pamela.
Love that hat.
It's very red hat society.
Not that kind of lady. Try not to take it off. You know, once you put a hat on, ladies, you know.
You can't take it off ever. No.
Chad, would you mind passing the microphone since we've now got it started?
That's great.
Maybe did buy it anyway.
Testing, testing.
It's not so much, it's not so much for us, it's for.
Oh, it's online.
Otherwise, you can't hear.
I can't.
Anybody back there or anybody in the audience.
Okay, so I don't need to be overly loud.
Right.
Okay. All righty, thank you. Twenty twenty four road project as typically S D E reaches out to. Uh, H and K to get a budget estimate. The budget was extremely high, but. Um, it is what it is. So we'd never know with asphalt, asphalt prices. So what we decided to do. In talking with Dean and the team is we broke it out with Park Alley as the alternate. So if the, but the project comes in under budget and really good, the potential is to award Park Alley. But if it comes in high leaning towards H and K, we want to get your primary roads done, which include Fifth Avenue from Oak Terrace to Penn. The two hundred and four hundred block of Spruce and the four hundred block of Great. Okay, so I need authorization so that Chip and the rest of S D's team can advertise the twenty twenty four roads project. With the base bid and the alternate being Park Alley.
All right, does anybody have any questions on that action item? Otherwise, looking for approval.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Keg.
Second.
Second by Mr. Shaver. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
Um, our goal is to bring it in for the February meeting. If that's okay. So we mentioned those bids, especially since they were high on the budget. Get them in sooner than later. And if they are out of whack. We always reserve the right to rebid. So that's why I'm gonna bring them in now, if that's okay.
Sure is.
Okay, the D C E D Greenlight Go grant year eight, which is the Fifth Avenue. Uh, we did prepare the. Professional services agreement, so that is moving forward. And so that project will start, uh, the design and permitting. And then it will go to bidding and construction. That grant is three years. I'll put the date of the grants in the next report. Uh, but we're on target. So I'll keep you all posted. That's moving forward. Then D C E D grant year nine is due in February. So there's a, uh, three-week window where if we get reapproved for the scoping that we sent in. Uh, that was the December fifteenth that we had to do that, then we will apply for the full scope of the work. And we're looking at a hundred ninety-three thousand and change and a matching of forty-eight thousand and change. And that would be for the Seventh Avenue, uh, set along with Eighth Avenue to get that. Uh, part of the borough also up to date. I don't need any action on that tonight. For the. Security cameras in the, uh. Borough Hall here and Penn Avenue, I gave the chief a copy of the schedule. Uh, we're hoping that the agreement will be signed. By Berkshire Systems very soon. Otherwise, we have everything else we need and then we can execute the contract and get them going. Finally, so fingers crossed that'll be moving hopefully before the end of this month. What they will focus on, of course, is the building first and getting everything set up here because of the weather. And then the move to Penn Avenue in the spring. Uh, again, we have, um. Three years, it's twenty twenty-six that it ends. So. We're confident that that will be done again without any problem on time. And we also wanted to know if. We should be keeping our eyes open to help the chief, uh, because of the circle improvements. I don't know if everybody remembers that, but there were some circle. Improvements that were proposed, but then were taken off the grant. So if we do get advance notice, uh, before you know it, it'll be here September. Puff. Um, we can coordinate with the mayor and making sure that we do a grant together and again, apply for everything, including engineering and all the other. Matching that we would like to do. So now I'm hoping that that's a no match. So we'll request, just like they did this year, there was no match. Um, so fingers crossed with that. The other thing I wanted to do was reach out because we have multimodal, we have L S A. Grants that are still outstanding and I'm not hearing anything from. Awarding. So we'd like to keep pushing. Now I did ask for. Uh, Spencer Thornburg from Judy Schwank's office to give me an update on this grant that was just awarded for the water line. Uh, so that we know when we can start because we can't start before the effective date or else we don't get reimbursed. Okay, so keep that in mind. Help us out where you can. Okay, thanks. It's Chad. And.
Remember D C E D was like six months behind last year.
Yeah.
It was behind, yeah. And I had a friend at D C E D and she couldn't help.
One of these, the grant that was awarded, that was a twenty twenty-two submission and it's twenty twenty-four. So they're way behind. Um, not that it affects you guys, but the city finally approved the pickleball court parking. Woo-hoo.
Yes.
Yay. So those of you that can't walk and would drive to pickleball, hopefully in the spring, the association will request the pavement marking. So. That's good news to me. But I think you all know I want to push the button for the door. I've said that before. Uh, the multimodal grant we just talked about, uh, West Reading, there's nothing happening for the proposed parking lots. Dean, I think that. Do you want me to take it off the agenda or keep it on there?
Uh, take it off for now.
Okay. And then on sewer, we had a wonderful meeting the other day and talked about the lost revenue. Uh, in tapping fees. And what this comes from. Is when there's a change in use. So you have a change in use. Let's say it went from a one E D U, a residential use, and it got changed to a commercial use. Well, now there may be two or three E D Us. But unfortunately, Chad's not getting the paperwork he needs at that time. To then charge the extra tapping fees. So we discussed initially changing the ordinance, which is in your codification. To change at least the basic information, which I do want Dan Becker's and his office to make sure that we've ordered it correctly. But we can move forward with the authorization to advertise the ordinance amendments. We revise those key section that Chaz needs. I mean Chad needs in order to capture these tapping fees. And then move forward with the infrastructure committee, uh, we'll give them homework on. Additional revisions to the ordinance in that section of the water and sewer tapping fees. And the industrial users. So, um, before I ask for. Action, I, the industrial uses is another one. So you have, again, the residential use. It got changed to now something that. Um. Discharges to the sewer, either high strength, we call it high strength, that it doesn't meet a domestic flow anymore. Or they're flushing something down in the system, a lot of grease, which grease traps in the grease interceptor, but there could be nasty chemicals. Uh, we just had a treatment plant up in Schuylkill County. Titanium was discharged from a flooring company. And it killed all the bugs in the plants. So of course we had to explain what bugs were. Chad, you're testing. I'm testing you what bugs mean. Just kidding. There, they gotta eat the stuff. So every week they would do this process and it would kill the wastewater treatment plant. So. It's, there's a lot of stuff out there that you're not aware. Now, dilution is the solution to pollution, we say. But what if it is a high strength and over time it's going to get to where it's causing you problems? And it's traced back to the borough from the treatment plant that you discharged, discharged to. So we're also going to test, looking at the industrial users, making sure they have permits. And again, capture them and the change of use or start looking at them one by one by one, just like Jim says, we gotta start. So one by one by one. Um, you have the right to sample. So know that you have the right. The sample and check on those users. Okeydoke. So now I'm gonna ask for action. And again, this is just the initial amendment to capture tapping fees. And the change in use. And again, I'd like the authorization to include Dan Becker, his office to re. Review the information that I prepared in that ordinance amendment.
All right. Does anybody have any questions on the second action item? In regards to the advertising, the amendment to section three sixty-three dash three for tapping fees and three sixty-three dash six for connections. And then also. Amending that action item to allow the solicitor to. Make that motion. Motion made by Mr. Keg. Second by Ms. Line Decker. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Now we're gonna move on to water, the clean side of the borough. Um, and I know I saw on the agenda that Dan Becker's office will be authorized to also look at that. Uh, part of the codification that includes the ordinance regarding water tapping fees. So you have the same thing. So I'm sure, Dan, once you're looking at the sewer side, you can do similar language for the water side and get that. So again, uh, Chad can catch that in the change of use. So, but the good news is we finally, like we were talking, just we're awarded the five, Pine Street Waterline Replacement. And we have attached. The map at the back. I don't want to open that up and explain it for you guys. In talking with Karen as well as Dean, what we wanted to do is, does everybody have a copy? Yeah, I see Samantha has it up. Um, the valve is sort of in the middle of the street and your twenty twenty-four road project. Comes up from Oak Terrace up Fifth Avenue. And goes all the way then to Penn Avenue. So it goes through that road section. Then Spruce Street. Four hundred block goes up to that intersection from third to fourth. So what we're suggesting is that you box out that intersection. Even though you'll have joints, do you want that torn up? You're still going to affect the intersection. So you either pave through it. Or you box it out.
That was in, you mean Fifth and Spruce?
Yeah.
And that was in a new.
No, no, it's so paving it because we still have to attach to the new valve.
Yeah, you're gonna cut into the intersection is the point. So it will go from valve to valve, even though if it's a new valve, it will still go from the valve. Because Karen.
But you said valve?
We don't have to replace the valve. We just have to replace the pipe up to it. I don't know where they tap, they might, there might be a piece of new pipe there.
But that was all new piping back in the day. It's just that we had a lot of failure.
Yeah, so do we take that chance of replacing minus three feet or do we go all the way up to the valve?
And it's a twelve.
It's gonna be a stick on it with, uh, uh. Transition.
But it's a twelve inch you're upgrading to. So if you've got a six-inch.
Well, it's twelve now. We're just replacing it in kind.
I guess you don't, right? Even.
It does.
So you're tying into the existing valve at Spruce and Sixth. But then you're replacing the valve. It says replace existing valve at Fifth and Spruce.
Right.
Okay.
So that's a lot of work at Fifth and Spruce when you're digging up the street.
That's a heavy road, too.
And it's not because it's a twelve, is it a twelve by twelve? It's a twelve by twelve.
Should be a two by two.
But they're massive. So when you dig in there, that's our concern is we don't necessarily want to go in there twice. Uh, the other thing that Karen and I talked about was trench settlement. So what this does is it allows the waterline trench to settle and then your paving project, whether. We think it's probably twenty twenty-six because twenty twenty-four, we're starting design permitting, twenty twenty-five is probably the construction. And then you wrap things up in twenty twenty-six, you close out the project. So that would be perfect for a twenty twenty-six road project. But then let the trench settle and now you can come in and you can do the five hundred block of Spruce. That's what Karen and I discussed so that we don't. We're putting, we're not throwing away money. That's what I want to say to the borough. I don't want you guys to throw away money. I want to look. At each phase of the projects in those area and make sure we're making smart decisions.
You don't think you can get that done this year? That, uh, line? Is that what you're saying? You just don't think using, have it specked out and done this year?
Not installed, maybe specked out. But again, I don't know when the grant's coming.
Yeah, okay. No, that's the only reason I was asking. It's about the grant. All right.
I don't know. And that's what I'm saying. In the perfect world, this is probably the better way to go, just to take it in phases. But if something advances, then maybe it becomes a twenty twenty-five road project.
Yeah.
Okay, um, but I'm saying we still have time because these grants are three years. So that was the whole thing is that we're on target for the grant. So. When the grant effective date actually happens, um, I would have action already to start on that. So I would like to have the authorization to design and permit. Um, and then once that's all ready, then I can ask for an additional action for bidding and construction. But at this point, um, design and permitting based on the effective date of the grant being awarded. And this would be for the five hundred block of the water main replacement project in line with the grant.
Does anybody have any questions on the third action item, which is the authorization of the engineer to proceed with design permitting? Bidding and construction of the waterline replacement project on Spruce.
I do just have one question. Are we separating again the design and the permitting from the bidding and the construction?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Because it may be a while and that way I can bring it back to you.
Okay, so we're just discussing the, or voting on the design and permitting.
You got it. You got it. Because it might be a year or so and I'd rather, I'd rather come back with current action.
Okay, thank you.
That's just my thoughts for you guys.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Good catch. Uh, so looking for consideration of authorizing that action item as amended.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Line Decker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keg. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
All right. And then I think the last action item is, um, for. Penn Avenue and Franklin Waterline Replacement on Sixth Avenue between Penn and Franklin. S D can investigate another grant. Now there are several grants still out there. There could still be ARBA money, H two O money. Not sure. So we could work with Samantha to figure out what other grants are out there for another waterline replacement, but. Uh, this rides on the coattails of the previous action. I think that's great. You know, if we can show whichever the agency is that we are very proactive on these grants. And do name their financial assistance.
Does anybody have any questions on that action item? Looking to authorize the engineer to investigate more grants for the waterline on Sixth Avenue. Seeing none, looking for approval. Uh, one question, I'm sorry. Um, what's kind of waterline? Is it a main or is it just? Okay, so that's the main. All right. Just wanted to make sure. Got it.
You're in the SpaghettiOs and the old lines.
The hot.
That's gonna be a big project, too.
Yeah.
These are all ones that serve in the hospital, too.
Yeah, in the area.
Only concern I have with that. It takes us two, three years to get the grant. Another two years to do it. We're looking at two thousand thirty until we get that road done. It's a long way.
You mean?
Six, seven.
Six thousand.
It took us what, two years to get the grant for this one? She's another two years to. To get the project done.
That's worst case scenario, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they're looking for open grant opportunities.
Yeah.
Now, the other thing to consider, depending on how we write the grant, um, we could write it that it includes paving. Depending on the agency, some of the agencies approve that. Some don't. It just depends on the agency. Some will only pay. For trenches, and Dan and Savannah, you know what I'm talking about. So let's be positive and think that who we're going after, we can include. Full wood paving.
Yeah.
So it may not be as far out carry as you think.
Okay, no, just my, that was only my concern because that was horrible.
I agree.
All right, uh, looking for consideration to authorize the engineer to investigate another grant to replace the waterline on Sixth Ave. So moved. Motion made by Mr. Keg.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Ms. Line Decker. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Okay, even though there's no action, the updates at Candlewood Suites, we are gonna send another letter with an N O V that they need to continue to submit the permits. And structural design for the retaining walls. They only submitted the first part, which were like the Lego wall blocks, I'll call them. Not replacing the pilings and the railroad ties, I'll call it. And I, talking before the meeting, I understand now that the four hundred Walllet Street hearing was moved to. Um, latter part of February and S D's representative will be attending, uh, attending. And that's all I have tonight. Thank goodness, right?
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Stevens? Otherwise, we can let her get out of here. Thank you.
My notes be fine. Who's next? Who gets the magic microphone? And it's sweaty, sorry.
Uh, it'll eventually be Nick, but do we have any questions on the, uh, engineers report?
I'll head it back to you, Chad.
Seeing none, looking for approval of the engineers report. Thank you for being thorough.
You're welcome. That's cool. So now you're gonna get this work a little longer, but I'd rather educate.
Yeah.
And try to explain things to you and not be too brief. So that way, when you're making these actions, you are fully aware of my thoughts. So I hope you don't mind.
Much appreciated.
Context is always.
Yes.
Yes. Context is always good. Yeah.
All right, any questions? Otherwise, looking for approval of the engineers report.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Keg.
Second.
Second by Mr. Shaver. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next up is council president's report. I have nothing to report that isn't already on the agenda. So we'll move into the borough manager's report, Dean.
Good evening, everybody. Um, actually, it's short and sweet tonight. I only have two action items for you.
That is less than ten.
So the first action item is consideration of creating up to three voting alternate member positions with a six-year term to the Civil Service Commission. So currently, we don't have any alternate members to the Civil Service and our code allows us to have alternate members.
And one can be a member of council. Yeah. Uh, does anybody have any questions on that?
Sorry, when you say one can be a member of council, does that mean one of the members of the actual commission or one alternate?
As it's written, it's the actual.
So it doesn't, I'm, my question was, so it doesn't matter whether, what position that person would be, like?
If we would ever choose to appoint.
Exactly. Yes, that was mine.
We don't have to.
Perfect.
Good question.
Does anybody have anything else? Otherwise, looking for consideration to create up to three voting alternate member positions with a six-year term to the Civil Service Commission.
So moved.
Which may buy Ms. Line Decker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Shaver, all in favor. All opposed, motion carries.
And my last action item is consideration of authorizing the solicitor to review. An ordinance to establish regulations regarding management and operation of water service connections to the water system. So and as since that is the, the new letting copper rule coming down from the state telling everybody that we're mandated.
Does anybody have any questions on that? Seeing none, looking for approval. Which made by Mr. Shaver.
Seconded.
Second by Ms. Line Decker, all in favor. All opposed, motion carries. Anything else, Dean?
That is my report, if anybody has any questions.
Any questions on Dean's report? Seeing none, looking for approval. Motion made by Ms. Bauer. Second by Ms. Dropnik, all in favor. All opposed, motion carries on to the mayor.
Um, so you have my report in front of you, uh, January second was the organization meeting. Uh, January fifth, I had the privilege of attending the Valley Forge event. Um, meeting with the chief in law enforcement matters, uh, throughout this past week, I've, I've engaged with Chief Tornelli on different topics. And notably, the approval of by council hiring another officer and going over what we can do to be more. Alluring to, uh, people to come over, I did note that. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna meet again about it, um, this coming week to kind of go over in more depth, there was an issue with. Um, hiring Act one twenty versus not hiring Act one twenty, um, with civil service. So the city has a different agreement than we do here, um, we do need to require Act one twenty. Or it's a different financial aspect, which, um, when I get more details, I will absolutely, um, let you guys know, um, further. And then obviously, just working with KT and the chief with snow emergencies, uh, December usually to January is pretty slow. Just because it's the very end of the season, so not too much event-wise or otherwise, um, so if you have any questions, let me know, otherwise, that is my report.
Anybody have any questions on the mayor's report? Seeing none, looking for approval. See Ms. Stevens? Uh, motion made by Mr. Shaver. Second by Ms. Line Decker, all in favor. All opposed, motion carries. All two department reports, Sammy, you want to take this one?
Yes, so, uh, police department, um, the report is in front of you as need, as you see, um, there are two action items. Um, action number one is consideration of a pre approving an officer to attend classes and receive college tuition reimbursement in twenty twenty-four. Per the current collective bargaining unit, bargaining agreement, that is, uh, Kyle Bone.
Does anybody have any questions on that? Otherwise, looking for approval.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Dropnik. Second by Ms. Line Decker, all in favor. All opposed, motion carries.
The second action item is consideration to execute the police service dog and handler maintenance training agreement for twenty twenty-four with Progressive Canine Academy LLC. That is obviously Brandon Brightenstein and C.
Does anybody have any questions on that? Otherwise, looking for approval. Motion made by Ms. Bauer. Second by Mr. Shaver, all in favor. All opposed, motion carries.
Um, other than that, uh, the report's in front of you, have any, um, questions, please let me know, otherwise. I will try to an- answer them, or I will note them down for, uh, the chief for tomorrow.
Does anybody have any questions? Seeing none, looking for approval.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Keg. Second by Ms. Line Decker, all in favor. All opposed, motion carries on to Public Works, KT.
I have a copy of my report in front of you, if any questions, we're happy to answer.
Questions for KT? We're still working on the part timer. Fortunately, we couldn't get in to meet with any of the candidates before the meeting, uh, so we'll be looking at next month.
How'd the electric go at the memorial? Says you ran electric to the park?
Yeah, we got it over there, um. Newcastle came down, they had a, um. What we're looking for, ensure the electric take it down, capacitor?
Transformer?
Transformer, that's it, they, they installed the transformer for the light, so that's all done, they're ready to go.
Awesome.
They go for spring?
How would, how's it been doing down there with all the rain we've been getting?
As far as I know, it's been doing great, everything, report I got says it seems to be handling it.
Talk about getting that in just in time, because if that wasn't in, that would have flooded out that entire memorial.
Because that was a, that was a mess.
Yeah, there was a lot, that was a lot of rain. Thank you very much for doing such a good job on that.
Does anybody have any other questions on the Public Works report? Seeing none, looking for approval. Motion made by Mr. Shaver, second by Mr. Work, all in favor. All opposed, motion carries on to the Fire Department, Chief Meyer.
Good evening, everyone, you all have a copy of my report, um, I have nothing to add to the report, I do ever have an action item. About two months ago, I came to council and told council that we had a prospective buyer for the old engine. Um, that buyer ran into some problems on their end, and now they're not contacting me back after numerous attacks. So it looks like we. As the truck sits there and gets older, its value only diminishes. But we're talking to, after talking to Dean, we decided that it may be prudent to consider advertising it on public surplus. Uh, with the reserve. So that's what I'm looking for council's consideration to approve advertising it for auction on a public surplus. Uh, for reserve, I would say not below thirty. Um, our previous offer, we would have, the borough would have received forty-five thousand after Brittenley's portions, so I would say somewhere between thirty and forty-five. Um, one thing to keep in mind that council needs to consider is, if somebody who inquired about the truck through Brittenley. Bids on the truck through public surplus and gets the truck, we're still obligated to give Brittenley their ten percent.
There's, yeah, and we had talked about it yesterday.
I just remembered that you brought that up now, because I did ask this at the meeting. With, you have the people that inquired about the truck from Brittenley, right?
Yes, every time somebody inquired through them.
We need them listed, so that way we can bounce them off if they do bid for it.
I went back and found those emails.
That way Brittenley can't point back at us and say, oh no, they definitely were interested at some point in time, and try to collect an extra five percent off of us.
Sorry, I just remembered that.
Does anybody have any questions on the action item? Everyone go with it? All right, uh, looking for approval.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Keg. Second by Ms. Line Decker, all in favor. All opposed, motion carries. Any other questions on the Fire Department's report? Seeing none, looking for approval. Motion made by Mr. Shaver. Second by Ms. Bauer, all in favor. All opposed, motion pair, motion carries on to Code Department, back to Chad.
Uh, once again, you all have a copy of the Code Department report. Um, I have nothing to add to that, if anybody would like any clarification on the sewer or the stuff that, that panel kind of dove into. I'd be more than happy to discuss that after the meeting, if anybody has any questions about why the changes are necessary.
Does anybody have any questions on the Code Department report? It's good to see Redding Hospital doing more renovations. Always a positive sign over there, so.
They're just renovating the office spaces to upgrade them.
Use, use related upgrades, um, and one thing to touch on that, that I believe you brought up last, uh, month. The apartment building on Penn Avenue, their solicitor submitted a letter requesting a ninety-day extension on the notice that I sent that last month.
And then that's, uh, the ninety days, um. Starts. On your response to them, or?
Yes, that's what I put, that's when, and I gave them ninety days from when I responded to their request.
Does anybody have any other questions for Chad or Code Department? Seeing none, looking for approval. Motion made by Mr. Shaver. Second by Ms. Dropnik, all in favor. All opposed, motion carries on to the CRF, Nick.
Um, everybody should have my report, are there any questions that anybody has on it?
Everybody should have my report, um, are there any questions that anybody has on what was submitted?
Does anybody have any questions before hitting the action item? All right, seeing none, you do have some road closure requests for twenty twenty-four, so we can try to knock all those out. Uh, first is Pretzel and Beer Fest, which would be Saturday, April twenty-seventh, the event times from se- uh, eleven AM to five PM. It would be looking to block down the roads from nine to seven, from the five to seven hundred blocks. Uh, Art on the Avenue is scheduled for Saturday, June fifteenth, uh, from eleven to seven. Road closures from the four hundred to seven hundred blocks from nine to nine. Fall Fest will be September twenty-first with the same times and blocks. Then Second Fridays, which will be April twelfth, May tenth, June fourteenth, July twelfth, eight, uh, August ninth, September thirteenth, October eleventh. November eighth and December thirteenth, which requires a South Sixth Avenue road closure from five to seven. Anybody have any other questions on that?
So the Second Fridays is the off-street, so that's approved by the mayor. The other ones are Penn Avenue road closures, so they are gonna go through Penn Dock, correct?
Yep, you're South Sixth.
I have no problem for being South Sixth.
All right, any other questions on the, uh, road closure requests? Do we have to do anything for, uh, Farmers Market?
Uh, no, I don't believe so, because that's just, uh.
Well, it's still blocking South Sixth.
Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll have to get those dates for the mayor then too.
Okay, we'll work on that then, uh, but at least for now, as I mentioned, the road closure requests as stated, does anybody have any questions on those? Seeing none, looking for approval. Motion made by Ms. Line Decker. Second by Ms. Bauer, all in favor. All opposed, motion carries, anything else for the CRF report? Seeing none, looking for approval. Motion made by Mr. Shaver. Second by Mr. Work, all in favor. All opposed, carries. Thank you, Nick, on to the EDI Task Force, right now that was Jen, uh, we're still reconfiguring it. I have a certain suspicion it'll still involve Denise and also Bethany as well, uh, but we'll have more on that at a later date. Uh, so we'll move forward to the Recreation Commission, uh, and we'll start with Mike.
You all have a copy of my report in front of you, I have two action items this evening, uh, the first action item. Is consideration of approving the twenty twenty-four recreational calendar of events, there it is in all its splendor. Uh, karaoke, fishing rodeo coming back, uh, our dance is actually going to be open to families. This year, so it's not gonna be strictly the dazzling daughter's dance. Um, got information on the pool. Vines and Vibes, which is gonna be awesome this year. Got, I don't know if I want to reveal too much about it. So that's Bethany's, uh, Bethany's baby. But yeah, uh, first action item, consideration of approving the twenty twenty-four recreation calendar of events.
Okay, uh, there is one event on there that is requesting alcohol, that would be Sunday, May nineteenth. Vines and Vibes, a concert in the park series.
Correct.
They're requesting alcohol in the park system, the remainder, uh, the ones at Third and Spruce, so that doesn't require our approval. And then the one for September is still tentative to change, uh, depending where that lands, so we can hold off on that one, but. Uh, before you, you do have the calendar of events, I'm not gonna run through two pages worth. Uh, but approving the calendar as well as the alcohol in the park on Sunday, May nineteenth for Vines and Vibes.
Also be aware, the rain date for Vines and Vibes, June ninth, would, would include alcohol if we had to use that date.
Yeah, I, I figured we're just approving it for the event in general.
All right, does anybody have any questions on the calendar of events?
Good question.
Otherwise, looking for approval. Motion made by Ms. Line Decker. Second by Mr. Work, all in favor. All opposed, carries.
All right, second action item is. Consideration of authorizing the advertisement of twenty twenty-four seasonal employment positions, that means the pool. That means playground, it's that time, so think warm, think, uh, sunny and the whole nine yards, so. I know, uh, we're gonna be needing. A pool manager, an assistant pool manager, so tell your friends, tell your neighbors, whoever.
Does anybody have any questions on that action item?
Just make a really good post and we'll all share it.
That works too.
He knows how to use Canva.
Yeah, there you go.
I do.
All right, looking for approval to begin advertising for pool, playground managers, lifeguards and otherwise. Anything else, uh, considered summer employment with recreation.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Keg. Second by Mr. Shaver, all in favor. All opposed, she carries.
Right, there we had our home holiday decorating contest winners, four hundred Anne Street won, then four oh six Playground Drive was second. Four thirty-two Oak Terrace was third, so gonna be getting their gift cards after them, um. Uh, probably tomorrow, so, um, other than that, I'm getting ready for the summer, we got karaoke coming up. We're gonna have a pretty cool video that I'm gonna put together for that, interview some, uh, contestants and so forth, so.
What are you looking at me for? Tell you I was competing yet?
You, you are, stop it.
You're a previous champion.
You are. Kiss from Rose minted you, remember that?
We get information from four hundred Anne Street where they get those balls that hang from the trees.
He makes them.
He makes them.
Shut up.
Chicken wire.
My mom repeatedly is like, I'm gonna go up to their house and knock on the door and figure out where they buy them, why does everyone have them except for me?
Recreation used to make it, we used to do like a borough wide, like we could go and make your own.
Do that again. Make a hundred if you would let her, she really would, her whole house would be covered in. Our poor neighbors, anyway, sorry.
Yeah, that was a recreation commission, recreation commission.
He needs more things to do in the winter.
Uh huh, they would make them and you could buy, you could buy them.
Talking about boxes, the lights were down there. Downstairs.
Especially if you used to go out and help people put them in their trees.
These one actually came up, it was an idea down in.
Slingshot, slingshot, tennis ball slingshot launcher.
The one that you fired in the hallway. That's all I have.
Denise, you have anything to add from the commission itself?
Just calling all divas for karaoke competition on February eighteenth, five PM, at Third and Spruce.
Yes.
Any questions on the rec report? Uh, also, we're finishing up tidying the, uh, online registration for both pool and playgrounds. Uh, Mike has both rough drafts in hand, reviewing for just making sure that everything is good. It's really tough trying to combine, combine five pool forms into one.
I mean, it works.
It works. It's just very, uh, it's very conditional, so if you're not a West Reading resident, you only get non-resident rates. If you are a resident, you have to input a picture of your credit card, or not credit card, picture of your driver's license or permanent resident card or passport. Uh, to prove residency, and then you get the West Reading permits, but they don't pay until Mike verifies with them, so. And he'll, uh. So hopefully, uh, they can still do the regular paper form if they so choose, but, uh, this will be upcoming. Does anybody have any questions? Uh, looking for approval of the, uh, recommission report. Motion made by Ms. Line Decker. Second by Mr. Shaver, all in favor. All opposed, motion carries on to planning commission, Bill.
We met on the third, we're still working through the, the form-based codes, uh, project with Dirk and Edson. Uh, and that takes up pretty much our entire meeting, uh, meetings for the, for the foreseeable future. So it's, it's, it's a lot of technicalities, it's all laying out here in the minutes. I know, Dan, we probably need to, Cindy and I need to talk to you, okay, you got it right there. About, uh, it, it's very exciting, folks, we're renumbering. Renumbering, uh, a healthy portion of the code, going like number by number and sub number by subsection, it's very exciting stuff. Um, but that, but it's, it's all necessary work, they need to get done. But, uh, that, but it's, it's all necessary work that needs to get done in order to make it as useful as possible for staff and for anyone looking up something in the future, uh, online or what have. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy.
Silly question, are those relatively uniform numbers across like ordinances that they just select four fifty, section four fifty-five, or do we just?
I don't believe so.
No, no, they're all different. What I think they're doing here in part two conversation with Cindy is trying to leave room for expansion down the road.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, I mean.
Among other things.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty crazy just how much time they've actually spent on that portion of the project to make it, you know, to you know, plug everything in where it needs to go to make, make sense. It's like a library science graduate class, it seems. When they come in and talk to us, it's like. But, uh, it's, but it's, it's good stuff, so, because if you know Mark, he's very, very thorough, so. Anyway, give Pam a run for her money.
Any questions on the, uh, planning commission report? It was just one page too, so. She might have set a new record tonight.
No, I just suppose.
Uh, any questions for planning commission, if not, looking for approval? Motion made by Ms. Line Decker. Second by Mr. Keg, all in favor. Opposed, motion carries on to EDC, Phil.
Like always, um, you know, we've got businesses that come, we've bought, we've got businesses that go. You know, maybe you've seen the, the announcement that Noodle was closing recently in four twenty-eight Penn. But apparently there's a new lease agreement already in place, from what I've heard, for another restaurant to go in there. Some other businesses shifting around, um, you know, the borough to, uh, staying in the borough from one location to another. Um, because they feel like they still want to be here, but perhaps maybe in a bigger place or more prominent location. One thing that I would highlight is that Nick, who just stepped out, he is, he's working with the executive director of the Goggle Works to get, uh, to get a, a schema, uh, written up for a new design for the railroad bridge. Um, because we have to have that design in hand before we can go to Norfolk Southern uh, and submit those plans to, you know, to repaint it or to do, do any, do some other things up there. It's been over twenty years since it's been painted and other communities have done other things other than paint, whether it's raised letters and lighting and things like that. Ardmore's a good example, uh, down closer to Philly, if you've ever been down there. Um, cuz you have Norfolk Southern lines just crisscrossing all these communities in, in southeastern PA, so. Um, so it's moving in a positive direction. Um, from what I understand, the Norfolk Southern folks have someone designated in-house to deal with these types of things, which they probably didn't twenty-two, twenty-three years ago. Um, cuz that was a very arduous and, and painful process with them, but I feel like it's, they've streamlined it. A lot, you, you're.
I remember how painful it was.
It was, it was painful. I, if you ever, if you ever want me to email you the original agreement that the borough signed with Norfolk Southern, I have that for you. And it's about fifteen to twenty pages to paint a bridge. Yeah, 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 we're paying to paint their infrastructure. Um, but, so exactly, but it was.
Having people that were the up and top.
Yeah, we had to pay for flag, union flaggers, like while your paint contractor, painting contractor was up there. So there is some corrosion on the bridge, it probably needs to be abated before they can put any type of new paint on it, of course, gotta take care of that. So, you know, within, you know, hopefully, maybe, you know, we, we can get this all lined up before next winter, before it gets too cold. It'd be nice. I don't know how long. I mean, if you've seen some of the overpass projects that Penn Dot does sometimes, that the repainting stuff, it seems like it takes a long time. I mean, they gotta put the plastic up and all that stuff to sandblast off the rust and the corrosion, so there's not air particulate and things like that in, in the vicinity, so I don't know, they'll probably have to maybe do some of that, so it may be a little bit more involved than we think. Um, but we don't know until, you know, the devil's in the details, right?
I can actually expand on it. I met with, uh, Levi, who's the executive director of Goggle Works, and Nick, uh, and Mark, for that matter, uh, back on the fifth. And I think what they're currently looking at, they were looking to find, uh, at least three artists who are willing to craft up some designs here in short order, uh, and provide them for council and the general community to get feedback on it and try to move forward with hopefully one of those designs. And actually, rather than painting the bridge itself, they were looking at, uh, the way that they've recently been doing it is they will actually put a frame on the bridge itself and they will hang portions of similar to the way that the, the Pope one in Reading, that it's actually just big squares that they paint and then they just hang them, which allows for if one of them happens to, you know, get, you know, uh, hit with, uh, some weather or, you know, they become extremely weathered, you can just take off a panel, repaint it, and you can do that in portions rather than needing to repaint an entire bridge at one, at one point, so. Yeah, it's, uh, it's all good stuff and hopefully they'll have stuff, uh, waiting for us, uh, for next meeting. We'll see how quick they're moving on that. Part of it was trying to find the right artists to, that would have a connection to West Reading and things like that, so. Uh, Mike Miller's been contacted, so he'll be involved in the project. I could see your concerned look on your face, Denise.
We have resident artists.
Mike's been reached out to, yeah, sorry. Um, anything else for economic development? Seeing none, looking for approval.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Line Decker.
Second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dropnik, all in favor. All opposed, carries. Uh, EAC was canceled, which brings up TNI, which would be Pat. Welcome back for, uh, TNI.
Yeah, so I guess. Alright, so, should all have the minutes in front of you from our last meeting, which was on January tenth. Uh, we have one action item that we're bringing, which would be consideration to approve placement and ex, and execution of an agreement with the South Central Transit Authority to locate a bus shelter along South Seventh Avenue. Now, if you look at the screen, you'll see where the, we're down near where the proposed area is. So where the current bus stop is, is on the east side of South Seventh Avenue, right there at the, the new, uh, driveway. Now, they want to install a more permanent, uh, shelter, a little bit north of that. Chad will go back to that spot, right there in between those two trees. Chad, it, correct me if I'm wrong, they are making sure the hospital is taking care of ADA requirements, like they're responsible for that.
Hospital made the initial request cuz they were running into problems with the buses blocking their driveways.
Yep.
And, uh, people waiting in the lobby and then missing the bus because they were waiting in the lobby.
Exactly.
They actually reached out to the transit authority, they're maintaining it. They've been in communication with the transit authority, they've everything worked out in terms of the ADA requirements for the bus stop. Uh, and everything along those lines.
And you said with regards to the agreement, everybody's good with it, everybody had eyes on it and.
Agreement has been reviewed by Call of Dan's office and the transit authority solicitor both gave it the thumbs up. Um, the one thing that, that came from TNI was the, uh, line of sight and today you've got a drawing with the line of sight included for the driveway and it is outside of the line of sight.
Problem with the line of sight, it's not covering is the bus sitting there.
That is true to the line of sight.
And that's gonna be a bigger issue, cuz that bus is gonna take up the whole thing.
That whole lane.
But it is currently doing that now.
It'll be, it'll be less.
But the thing is where his line of sight's blocking now is, i- it's, they can come out in front of that thing, turn in front of it. The other concern is i- it's blocking a lane of traffic.
Yeah.
It's blocking the lane now, it's just in more of an inconvenient spot because right now it's like blocking the driveways also. So like, I, I completely understand what you're saying, but it's gonna block the lane of traffic regardless. This makes it, um, better for so that people aren't running out in front of it and behind it while it's blocking the, um, driveways, because cars were trying to jet, jut around and around it and it was making it e- even more dangerous. I was actually one of those people because I was trying to cross at the crosswalk and somebody was trying to jut around.
I really think they should move it up the street further.
Yeah, I was gonna say, my concern would be with that crosswalk sitting right there. That bus is gonna take up a large portion of that curb, which could lead to people coming out in that crosswalk completely blocked by the rear end of that bus and then stepping right out into somebody coming southbound on South Seventh.
If you go up a little bit, can you sprint the other way? If you go up a little bit, you can see there's an open area here. I don't understand why we couldn't take like one or two of these spots here. But no, if you take one or two of these parking spots here, then that gives you that lane, gives you a clear cut area for them to get off the way and actually gives you a bigger area for that bus to pull out into.
Because it's not that narrowed section right there.
Yeah, I think they're also trying to keep it as close to the new center as possible so that people aren't.
Yeah, these are people coming out of
Surgery.
That specifically, that entrance specifically.
But that's just, that's speculation, I mean.
It takes into consideration these two handicap ramps that are already there.
Yes.
Borough wanted it up here, the borough may have to look into putting a handicap.
They were talking about the same distance there as it would be the other way.
Unfortunately, what they should have done, this is in hindsight, they should have made that turnaround wide enough for a bus to come in and out of.
Yeah, agreed.
Versus now we have to go back and figure this out and not like public transportation didn't exist like ten years ago when they built the building.
They don't, that bump it wasn't there back in the day. They put that in, they put that building in, that roundabout.
Doesn't it need a certain amount of space also for it to be a shelter? Cuz weren't we talking about that at TNI where it needs like three feet?
Yes, there needs, so in front of the bus shelter, there needs to be a five foot wide by eight foot long concrete, uh, landing pad or discharge pad for wheelchairs to offload the bus onto that landing pad and then access the bulk of right away.
So that may be why.
To an area where there wasn't this, uh, bump out, there's probably not gonna be enough distance for them to install that meet ADA requirements.
So that's just, it's a problem without a perfect solution, so we're just trying to make.
Trying to make it better.
In, in my opinion, it does better the solution, better the current solution.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree.
You're actually giving people a place to load up and it's ADA, it'll be ADA and there's, it won't be affecting the trees. It's actually gonna be going around that tree specifically. So if you can imagine, the shelter is gonna be right there where he's talking about, and then there's gonna be a sidewalk that's gonna go across the front of that tree and then.
I am just.
Connect in.
I am just worried exactly about what you've said about someone. Because it's not like a school bus, right, where you have to stop and you cannot go.
Keep going right past it. And this is worse than how it's currently configured, cuz when it's on the east side, wait. Is it on the other side of the street currently?
Yeah, it's down here, so you that.
Well, no, it's on the same side of the street, it's right there where that pedestrian sign is, it's on the bottom of that.
They at least get to see what's coming.
You can see what's coming, exactly.
Crosswalk's not.
Blocked.
They're, they're in a clear view of the crosswalk, I don't know about behind them, is there one behind them there?
Yeah, there is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But even still, that's decent enough.
But there's enough distance there. Like I said, my concern is they're gonna be fighting right up against the back of that bus and people coming southbound just.
We also run into the problem that the bus being here, if a car's coming southbound wanting to turn into the horseshoe, now they're blocking traffic in both directions. Where that problem will be alleviated as this moves up.
At least that, with the problem of them being blocked with a bus being there, I, I mean, how, how long does a bus sit there for? Do you know what I mean? It's not, it's not, it's not sitting there for ten, fifteen minutes.
We're not picking up a lot of people, it's picking up, it's just making sure that people have service specifically for the ADA.
Exactly.
That was the primary reason I think that they went into this.
Yeah, my, my concern is just people getting.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I don't know what the review, uh, actually Lori has her hand raised. Uh, Lori's part of the, uh, South Central Transit Authority, so. Uh, Lori, if you'd like to shed some light on this, go ahead.
Yes, hi, um, Lori Alska from South Central Transit Authority. Um, as Chad said, we were contacted by the hospital to, to move the, the stop location and actually put in a shelter. Um, and to answer the last comment about, um, the dwell time from the bus, um, the, it will be a very short pickup time, um, less than a minute, um, depending on the number of people. And obviously, if, if no one is at the shelter, the bus will just go by. It's not a stop that we stop at every time, even if, if no one is there. So, um, the concern about the clear sight, um, being blocked by the vehicles and also the crosswalk, um, it will be a minimal amount of time, um, to be in that location. There is a stop further up the street at the other part of the hospital. So again, they were looking at, um, this location for the, the tower and, um, for people to be able to, to wait out in a covered shelter. Um, or we would have looked, um, up at a different location. Um, or as was mentioned, if we were included in the land development process, if we could have, of made the, the loop there at the entrance. Um, but as it is designed right now, we would not be able to, um, go in there and make the, the turn back around there. Um, so we'll, we just, uh, stop on the street.
This is a question that would be answered by the hospital, Lori, I'm sorry, not by you. Can the shuttle buses fit up that? They can fit up in the turnaround, right?
Um, I'm not sure the size of their buses, um, like our Barta Special Services buses. Um, they should be able to fit in there. Those are, I believe, twenty-five foot, uh, buses. The ones that we have, um, the fixed route buses are, uh, we run, I believe, thirty-five foot buses. So their turn radius, um, especially making a, a left hand, a left turn there, that whole one eighty is, is, um, pretty substantial there to make that, but the smaller bu- buses, I believe, should be able to turn in there.
The reason I'm asking is if we're really worried about people that have just had a procedure, right, and need access to public transportation to get home. This sounds silly almost, but could a shuttle bus pick people up from this entrance and take them down to the stop where it is not an issue with line of sight?
Other question.
Um, I suppose they could, but I would, um, if there was somebody coming out from surgery, I don't know that they would be. I mean, I guess if it was their only option to ride the fixed route bus, um, I believe it would be other patients or visitors going in there. Like I said, we offer the Barta Special Services, which is door-to-door service, um, usually usually for, um, elderly or physically disabled people or people who are not able somehow to, uh, access the fixed route bus. So that is a service, um, that is something that we could, um, I could work with our marketing director to talk to the hospital about, um, some more advertisement about that service for people, um, coming out of surgery that don't have, uh, another means of transportation.
The only, the reason I was asking that, right, is we were talking about, I was always, and I don't know why, I was just thinking about it, of people like leaving the hospital, not thinking about people needing to arrive at the hospital. Um, so that is a, a good point.
But the, the question I have now, you, you're saying it won't be there very long, it'd be a very short period of time. But in the same token, you say, yeah, move it because it's blocking that and it's creating a hassle for them.
There's, there's not one right there now as.
No, they're saying, but in front of the driveway, they say it's, when it stops there.
I think they're thinking of it more for the shelter and the ADA compliance, cuz right there it's just grass.
Plus, as she mentioned, to be at the stop and they're all waiting.
In, in the lobby, they miss the bus.
People a place to actually come.
Yeah.
So the bus is actually lingering, waiting for people to come out from.
This is also gonna help with the PD side, cuz we've had a couple instances where the bus does not stop because people are waiting inside and then they are getting left there and the, the PD is getting called and having to, we had a, a very generous officer give two people rides home.
Wow, the concern I have those, in a winter time, cold weather like this, people standing, I'm glad they're sitting, they're gonna still sit.
Of course.
Inside wait for it, in a hundred degree weather, still gonna sit inside and wait.
I mean.
Oh, you can do it as an effort.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, you know, is what it is.
Cool thing is that it's gonna be a solar shelter, so it's gonna have lights inside that are run off of solar.
Alright, what about a heater?
Sorry, can't do that.
Also, uh, South Central, all the team that comes by every weekend at these trash.
Yep, and cleans and pressure washes it multiple times a year. I get everybody's concerns, we, we went over a lot of this stuff, we talked a lot about this. There's a bunch of different ways you could probably do it, but this, this seemed to be one of, it checked a lot of boxes.
I think it's like Xanathet, it's like a perfect solution.
But yeah, yeah.
That's the worst option.
Yes, yeah.
Liability, do we take in this?
We, the, there's an agreement.
Um.
Actually, real be, not to be funny, actually, real honest concern.
Yeah, I don't.
If someone gets.
I don't believe that.
Think you're getting.
Not that I wanna see anybody hit, not that I wanna jeopardize anything, but also, we wanna make sure also we allow whatever movement it is, that we have no liability in it.
Do you, uh, why have a copy of the, well, um, there's a copy of the agreement.
Collins reviewed, Collins made no mention of any liability concerns for the borough, he had, uh, two concerns. One of them was snow removal, which we have an existing borough ordinance, which can make the hospital responsible for snow removal around the stop. And the other one. And the other one, um, was some wording that, uh, the authorities solicitor was looking for. Um, in terms of ADA accessibility, basically requiring ramps, but the ramps already exist so that that's stripping from the agreement.
Uh, you know, you always have potential that somebody names you and says.
They don't hold my name, no matter what.
There's an indemnification clause, so I mean.
In, in the agreement, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But you still doesn't mean you won't get named.
No, yeah.
And you also have to approve the subdivision towards claim act, which.
Yeah.
Did, did, uh, did the committee discuss the option of taking out some of the parking spots?
So, what, TNI?
I think, yeah, what they were saying is it needs to be at sort of this bump out because of that five foot, five. So that bump out while it makes it a more narrow space is the reason that it's.
Yes, it's more for the ADA portion of it.
Yeah.
Any other questions on?
We'll see. All good questions.
And I mean, uh, the absolute worst case scenario, if something does happen, you know, it, it gets reevaluated and we make a decision based on the risk that we see there. But if this, I mean, I understand that this is the best option that we have right now.
The better solution.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. Because we don't want people not being able to get from this. Or if they, but if they make the decision to stay inside, then that's fine. And that's on them. But yeah, we're gonna provide them the opportunity.
Alright, seeing no other questions, looking for a motion to approve placement and execute the agreement with the South Central Transit Authority to locate a bus shelter along South Seventh Avenue.
I'm moved.
Which made by Ms. Line Decker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kegel in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Anything else on the TNI report?
Uh, nope. That was really the big thing that we had to discuss. Um, there is maybe, let me see, I think there was one other thing. Real quick, let me see. Uh, we are also continuing to look at speed concerns on Reading Avenue and staff is working through some hiccups with the monitoring equipment. Uh, but we expect to have some data back for the discussion at our next meeting. But I think that's it.
Alright, now any questions? Sorry, seeing none, looking for approval. Uh, the TNI report.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Dravnik, second by Mr. Shaver all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Shade Tree was canceled, so we'll move into safety committee. Dean.
We're safe.
Still safe. Hazardous communication was viewed, the training video, it was riveting.
Communication.
Did it win an Emmy last night?
It's not like the old seventies videos you used to watch, so.
Best though.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're a little updated, so we're, we're good.
Alright, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, what's hazardous communications? What does that even mean?
Yeah.
When your boss yells at you, you don't wear your pieces.
There you go.
A lot of it was just how to handle situations, basically.
Yes, escalation.
How to handle main people.
Oh.
That could become hazardous to your health.
I was gonna say, it had to do with like material safety data sheets and stuff like that.
You don't wanna help, you just wanna yell. Safety committee.
No one, Mike does dumb stuff either.
If there's, uh, no other questions on that, looking for approval.
So moved.
Motion made by, sorry, I didn't have my head picked up. Ms. Line Decker.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bauer, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. And we've had Mr. Tucci on board here and he's desperately wanted to, uh, give an update for Western Burke's ambulance. So Toot, cheer up.
Hey, no, thank you very much. It's been a wonderful evening. Guys do a great job. Hey, I just wanted to let you know you're going to start seeing a new format coming out for your monthly reports. Um, we found a way that you can do that through our ESO software that you'll be able to get a lot of deep, more detailed information out to you guys. Uh, also to let you know that we, we will be asking, um, to look for some funds for some training that we're, we're gonna try and set up for the area. And it involves, uh, police dogs. Um, I was able to attend that training and get certified for the sixteen hour police dog canine, uh, medical tactical officer kind of training to allow us to do, uh, training on medical stuff on police dogs. Uh, so we're gonna look to do that so we can get our officers and some of our medics trained to work with our police dogs and do that. But you'll see that down the road.
Hmm, awesome.
Any questions for Mr. Tucci or Western Burke's ambulance? Seeing none, uh, looking for approval of their report.
I'm moved.
Motion made by Mr. Keg.
Second.
Second by Mr. Shaver, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Onto the treasurer's report. Before you, you have the financial statement for all twelve months ending December thirty-first of last year. Plus the payment approval reports for December twentieth, uh, of last year to January twelfth of this year and then the thirteenth to the sixteenth of January.
See Jeanette's back.
Yeah, she's, she's in Costa Rica with this.
It looks like an album cover.
It's like an old.
She's in black and white in the background.
Yeah. She toiled with setting.
That's awesome.
I'll bet.
Does anybody have any, uh, questions? Otherwise, take a moment. Ready, looking for approval of the financial statement and payment approvals.
Well, I'm just, I, you know, give me a second or two here there, Ryan.
Yeah, you can jump up on your soapbox.
So, Ryan and I talked about this. I think it's al- always important to look at where we were. Let's see, for the year, what we budgeted for and what we brought in. And now, if you look, you know, of course, some line items overperform and some underperform. But, uh, based on what I'm looking at here is the entire budget overperformed to the tune of almost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, um, I would say that whether it's department heads or staff or, uh, the work that we do putting these budgets together every fall, you know, um, it looks like, it, and it like, looks like we're doing what we should be doing. And so if we get questions or if we see comments that do not have the full story about hey, why, you know, why is this this way? Or hey, what are you doing with all this money or whatever? Or hey, you're blowing money on this or blah, blah, blah. Actually, no, like, you know, the budget, you know, is reflecting an overall overperformance of what we budgeted. So you know, we're budgeting conservatively and the, the line items are performing above what we budgeted for so that we can keep, you know, a, a lid on public, public expenditure to the best of our ability, even though we have had to raise taxes the last few years. It is what it is. These are the limited tools that Harrisburg has given us. That hearken all the way back to the nineteen sixties when Mr. Rogers was a wee chap. Um.
I thought he always looked like this.
Um, and, and you know, and so it is what it is. So it's just, um, you know, uh, water rates have to go up. Those are pass-throughs typically that have nothing to do with us. Those are our authorities at work. Um, but the millage is what it is, the tax base is what it is. And I think we do a, a good job. Everybody, nobody lost, nobody lost their job. Everybody got a raise. We did, uh, abroad projects, we did infrastructure projects. You know, we, we, we supplied our residents with a recreation program. Quality of life in the borough, as far as I can tell, is higher than it is with some comparable communities. You know, and so we, we take care of ourselves and we, we work within our means to accomplish goals.
Yep.
And, uh, you know, the, the devil's in the details and details are right here. So it's just, it's important for me every, you know, January to look back and say, where were we? Did we do a good job and did we not do a good job? And, and in my opinion, and, and we can pat ourselves on the back, that is allowed. Um, and I'm, and I'm gonna do it right now.
Well, I think it makes it three straight years that we've come out net positive after budgeting in the negative. So.
Correct. That's, that's very important. And so we need to have these facts. And so our residents and our property owners know, know that the borough does have their back.
Yep.
Um, because you know, there, there are comments out there, um, you know, that, that I've seen, you know, recently and where you know, the borough's being blamed for other people's woes. That have very little to do with what we do or what we don't do. And so the, the, those burn me up and I do not like to see those types of things. So if we get questions, you know, we need to have the, the, the proper response to, to people saying, no, sorry, you're wrong. That's not the way it works. And by the way, I've never seen you at a meeting. So thank you very much.
Yep.
Um, but anyway, I'm done.
Me included in the minute that he patted himself on the back.
And I put my shoulder out at the same.
I don't accept, yeah, I don't accept points of order. Uh, do we actually ever vote on this?
No.
No.
Alright, does somebody wanna make a motion then?
I'm moved.
Motion made by Mr. Shaver.
Second.
Second by Mr. Word, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Enter our second round of public comment. Anyone in the audience? Mr. Rogers.
You're actually seeing as far as, uh, tapping in the sewer line. If I understand what part of this, that somebody that's a natural hospital sewer line and change it over to become a commercial one? How do you do that? I mean, you have to dig up a street, something, somebody has to.
If I'm, if I'm, if I'm, Chad, you tell me if I'm wrong here. I think, uh, it was about the use, not about the actual infrastructure itself. So if, for instance, if someone would take a residential property and convert it into a commercial use.
Which you can do on Penn Ave.
Yeah, it's a different rate. And so what Pamela was trying to highlight was that when that change of use occurs, the amount of, uh, the, the amount of use on that line might calculate differently. And we measure that in what's called EDUs. And an EDU, you're supposed to calculate the rate based on how many potential EDUs are gonna flow through that line based on what you're using the building for. So if I'm at home, I'm probably not utilizing the water line the way that I would if I was a restaurant, for instance. And so what she was, what she was saying is when you have a change of use, the EDU calculation might go up. And if in fact it does, the borough has the right to charge tapping fees based on those calculated EDUs. Am I wrong?
No, you're on the right track.
Okay.
The, the current ordinance wasn't worded strongly enough for us to be able to collect the fees on those changes in use. It was only basically worded for new structures or proposed structures. Not a change in use. So the new wording, a new word is would allow the borough to charge for changes in use.
But apparently this could occur on older structure rather than a new structure. Right away with it until somebody would want to.
Correct.
On it also protects us for the future because we have certain overlay districts and whatnot to try to expand out the commercial district to a certain extent. So you'll see changes from residential to commercial in the coming years.
Well, and it's not just residential to commercial. It could be changes from one commercial type to another commercial type. So for example, a restaurant to a hair salon. Where a hair salon would be charged per, uh, per seat, per hairdresser seat versus the restaurant, which would be fifteen chairs or ten chairs at, at the bar restaurant.
The size of the restaurant.
Correct. Or expanding a second floor, use some storage to an extra bar seating area.
Just curious, just.
Dig up a street without someone knowing, yes.
It's a twelve inch line going into the street.
This is what's the muscle, be able to collect fees better.
That should make you happy, right? Any other, uh, anyone else for public comment? Anyone online? See Karen once again shaking her head now. Alright. I will close the floor to public comment and look for a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
Motion made by Mr. Shaver.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keg, all in favor.
Alright.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thanks, everyone.
So, so.